Bottom line, you've got a lot of corruptness and a lot of illegal activity that's going on within the county. But I thank Cliff and Hal and everybody knows the citizens of Hope County let it happen. And the citizens of Hope County can change. Amen?
If they get out and vote.
But the main thing is, just like she said, call hats if you need a ride. Everybody schedule hats rides for the first 30 days, what is it before, what is it called?
One-stop voting.
One-stop voting. Everybody please place at least 40 calls a day. The ridership is only 12 per month according to state ban. So that should really drive them nuts. And then we can use our transportation services, God bless us.
Go to the polls.
Go to the polls. To go to the polls.
That is the height of community service.
If you need a ride, just call hats in Hope County.
And then if you want to come to the deep presentation, then maybe you can take a hat ride there.
Got a lot of problems, but we can fix it. We're gonna work on fixing it. It's like Hal said, we're gonna need volunteers. I need to impound on that. We need to have all our volunteers for the polls in place by the first of October. First of October. We're gonna have three shifts. It's gonna be 26 people. We've got to have 26 volunteers. So Janice is gonna have a list between now and October. I know we can get 26 people. One thing on the signs, before going further, welcome Charles Allen, City Councilman. We had an opportunity to attend their meeting last week. And I will compliment you folks on a very professional job on your agenda and the way that you handled the meeting in a very professional manner. Very professional. That's the first time I've ever been in the city hall.
You missed a lesson.
And I'm 39 in Holden, if you believe that, don't you?
At least.
Yeah, but they done a super job and I, we were, got very good response out of that. Also, we, the fire department, or McLaughlin building a couple weeks ago, I think we had 81 or 91. We gave away a television. We got a lot of good response from those fires. So thanks for the reports we can get when people are talking. We just need them to V-O-T-E, vote. Bottom line. We're gonna plan, we got a lot of things planned and I'm gonna let Brownie speak. We can start putting out signs in the city of Rafer on September the 7th. We already got clearance with that. We got, they put out the signs when we put them out in the county, we got to keep them out right away. Because the state of North Carolina, we're tearing down. But you can put them in priority anytime you want to put it. I hadn't told Brownie this, but I'm, I'm gonna let it be known now. We're gonna start meeting as, as Brownie for Hope County Commissioner on the 26th of July, all the way up until the night before the election on a Monday. We're gonna meet every night, every Tuesday night and on a Monday night before the election. We've got a number of, we've got, we've got a number of places we're gonna be going. I've already contacted the Hope County Civic League. They have extended to me an invitation. Somebody told me, said Larry, you mighty lucky.
Do they think you're singing?
One thing, one thing I did tell them I was gonna do, that I wanted to sing one song. And I wanted to sing "I Can't Even Walk Without Him Holding My Hand." Then I'm gonna introduce Brownie. That was a stipulation that I made. I've got several churches that have kinda opened up to us. And several of the churches, their pastors, I used to play softball with them. And they said, Larry, that's one stipulation. You sing that song. I said, well, Brownie's coming with me. Break it. So that's part of it. So I just hope, Frank, you gotta vote, folks. Yes, sir.
I don't know if this is the proper place to mention this or not, or if you guys are aware of this, but there's some property on Hope County. It has some land that rocks, which you haven't been able to sell. It's an opportunity to sell. For some reason, Hope County cannot afford to be there. Now, we could go, this is five years ago. That's the work of, no, this is two years ago. And that money has been approved. They have the money to make that approval. Need several fifty gallon of water more for them than they're able to supply now. And that was supposed to have been done by the end of 2015. What happened to that money?
Well, they got a pump station over off of Fiddleback Creek, right? The water sewer?
Just the water.
Just the water? Didn't that water go out to the Lumbey River? Or, correct me if I'm wrong, but...
Yeah, yes, and it says right here in the minutes of like last month, your water, take your water system and your sewer system and boost up the water, that's the money spent. But they did pay $53,000 for a man to add a coif to come up and do this inspection there. But they did those things a long time ago.
No, his money spent, it's gone.
What they're saying, what?
Somebody got in the water. Somebody got in the water. And am I correct in saying that about Lumbey River? Did that water go there or is that a different water?
They, no, it was, it was already headed out there, but they doubled super darned bit to make sure it went. As much of it's sewer. But they're also talking about PWC versus Hope County. So your water may be coming to you via PWC. PWC has a different water. You can't blend them together. It turns to a milky look itself.
Mr. Allen, do you know anything about that water? I know you know about the sewer.
Did that water he's speaking about go out to Lumbey River?
Well, PWC water is there for, well, in the quick pack of PWC. It'd have been on, on the dirt right there.
What he's talking?
It's coming around that road.
Well, I mean, that's the water, the water he's talking about. He's talking about it in the Rockfish area here, right here. That water's coming from the water tank over...
Adcock. Coming up Adcock.
Over there, close.
Sure, so Adcock.
Yeah, so it's coming there this way. We had some problems with that subbing, we did. Well, look, subbing, you know where that is. Didn't have enough water supply. We didn't have enough pressure for a fire protection. And like he says, I went to the utility meeting. And they said that they would have this thing where they could get water from PWC to a portion of it, out of it all, like hopefully. They're gonna put a pump station there. That was gonna improve it. I'm pretty sure it's a date somewhere around 2015. Whether it's been done or not, I don't know. I need to go over the test and...
Here's a, it just says, it just says right here, this is March 21st, 2016. They've made a motion to approve agreement for Engineering Services, LKC, and Engineering, imagine that, to develop a water supply study. It tells them here about the cost and what they're planning on doing with different areas. Sounds like absolutely nothing.
But that was for the overall system. This is a problem that we had for Rockfish area itself.
Yeah, that was, that was in there, they invented, they were shooting a line across where I'm at out there.
I have, in this area, we have static pressure of about 80 pounds PSI. It's static pressure. Now, when everybody's using water and everything, it gets down to about 20. And that, this system is big. So that you can get back up to 30 or 40 PSI residual.
Well, they were out here in 2014, towards the end of the year. They were trying to shoot from 401, where the water pumping station is from PWC.
Like that?
It's right there in front of the woodworking shop. That's, that's the water. They were trying to shoot it across here, but they couldn't find a way to do it because they said they couldn't use, they can't blend the two waters together because of the two different treatment systems. It turns it into something milky. So they weren't able to shoot one through there. That's when they found out that the water tank at Adcock, ever since they put it out, was what, two inches too low or something? So they spent, gone off a lot of money to raise it to the height of the rest of the tank.
Much the height of the water tank is at that expression. That's, we got that. Like I said, I got eight pounds, eight PSI at my house over there. But I'm downhill from Rockfish. But I'm down next to...
Let me interrupt for just a moment. I know we've been here quite a while. I think of all the answers to the questions that everyone is asking, that if the county commissioners would get out and mingle with the taxpayers and come out and talk to you folks, they could answer that question. And I've been to some of the meetings where they really don't like to take...
At the next meeting we have with Rockfish Community, I'll try and answer that question.
Water went out to the Lumbey River, Stone Gables Apartments and the crossings real fast, didn't it?
That's not where that money was parked, but it was...
Right, but, but water went there. But water went there, right? They did. They built the place. They had to have water.
Supposed to have been an impact.
Do a little research and find out who owns the property where those three facilities are built on and you'll be very shocked. Or talk to me later.
Well, last year, I've been working fairly close with Cliff and Hal and some other folks in the community. I've gotten to know what was wrong with the community and the county. And they've really educated me a lot. Once I'm elected, I can win it or something. And I can get here with some facts and I can help straighten things out. I'm not a yes man. If you ever went to any of their meetings, everything is, they're voting on the agenda, yes, aye, 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 aye. No one, was none of them want to stand up to anything, any of each one of them. They didn't. Yes, yes, yes. We gotta get rid of the yes man. We gotta get rid of the old boy, Simba. I think the main thing here tonight, what we wanted to do, and they go listen, they educated us, is the fact is, I think we're here tonight to ask for your support for me. But our educational are going on. And we'll do that in our community meetings. The word has gone out, I'm just for Rockfish. I am not just for Rockfish. I'm for Hope County. I'm for the people. I'm not going in there to make money for myself. I'm going in there to protect your money, which is already there, and put it in the right place. And I will find it. I've got good people behind me. They're knowledgeable. Anything I don't know, I'm gonna go to Mr. Abbott, like I asked a question tonight, and he put us on the right track. That's what we need. We need somebody who's gonna fill me with some good information so I can, in fact, put it back out to the rest of the people, take care of the people. I do not donate just to Rockfish. I've donated to the whole county. I am a county person and I'm not just gonna donate to Rockfish. Although I really like Rockfish, don't get me wrong. But I will, I am for the whole county. If you need me once I'm elected county commissioner, if you want me to come out and speak to you or any event that you might have, all you have to do is call me, schedule it, I'll be there for you. If you have any questions, I will be there 24 hours a day on my little old-fashioned cellphone and I'll answer. If I don't answer the first time, I check it, I will get back with you. One thing we really need to do, I went to a VFW meeting last night where I was inducted and went ahead and I joined the VFW. One thing I noticed, that the military want to be involved. They want to be involved in your county. However, they're not being approached properly. We need to get out and talk to the active duty and the retired military and get them involved in your county government. We gotta do that. Now, putting on a campaign and running for something that I'm running for county commissioner or state senate, it's gonna take a lot of money. Funds is what's gonna drive us up there. We need help in donations. Don't give them to me. Give them to the GOP. What we're gonna need help is some donations. I can't afford all. Any size I got a budget, I have to stay under. So if you can see anywhere you can help us out, even like with our hats, if you want more hats and you'd like to put this one as a donation, we'll be there to take it. But we're gonna need some help. We're gonna especially need some help on, I'd like to see some more four-by-four signs go up. Like what we have across the street. We need at least six people to sit on a board to schedule our events and still go down. It's hard to ask for volunteers because a lot of folks have got jobs, and I understand that. But if somebody could come in, sit with us and say, look, you need to go here, you need to go there, you need to talk here, speak there, that's what I need. And I would very, very appreciate the help. I have one supporter that I really, really wanna praise is the one that supported me with the sign that we're putting down on 401. That lit sign down there for Bumbey Builders. They have that sign down there.
Little building.
We got it for the month of October. Okay, so my one supporter came up and said, we're gonna have that. I want you to see, I'll have that. We went for it and we're gonna have it in October. Y'all know Dan Tavizio. When I first met him, I thought he was a great guy. He was approachable. Some folks applied for a seat, governor, congressman, whatever. If you're hard to approach, they think you're above them, so Dan must. But I want to make sure that I'm gonna fight for Dan. All I ask you is give me your signs. I would definitely look for you. I think you're worthy of the position. From what you're coming with me with and your standings and your holdings, I think you're very well worth that position. Dan is going against Ben Clark, as y'all know. Of course, y'all know I'm going against Commissioner Lee to Commissioner's rights. One big supporter that our county does have, believe it or not, and I'm not talking as bad about Kim... Denunzio, I'm not talking bad about Kim. But I do really believe we have one man that's already going to the general election, Mr. Hudson. Congressman Hudson called me after the primary to thank Hope County and he's gonna come down and do it formally for the fact of what they voted for. He called me, he said he wants to endorse me as the county commissioner. And he said that he will be down here, he'll be talking to the county more. And he wants to get to know a lot of the people in the county. So he is approachable. He kept his words with me. He called me back. I called him a couple times and he answered. I'm not talking about his age. I'm talking about Hudson himself. Oh, he's down the earth guy. He will answer. Of course, we know Trump is running for Hillary Clinton against Hillary, but excuse me.
He should be running.
Larry has already gave you about the signs in the city. You need more stick-type signs. So if we can get some more folks to volunteer and help me put out the signs. I got my guys putting out. If anybody wants any signs, this is now the GOP headquarters for Hope County. Where I have all signs here for the individuals that's running. With that being said, I would really wanna appreciate everybody who came tonight. I know I see some very, very well supporters. If you're elected as county commissioner, I promise you that I will go in, I will find your problems. And I want to fix the problems in this county, and God knows, we got a lot of them. I was told by a certain commissioner, the reason why he won the primary. Now, I stood out of all the faiths I didn't get because I was going to the general election. I didn't really need to go to the general face. I felt, I wanted to be a gentleman's advocate. He told me the other day, face to face, he said, Brownie, he said, how do you feel you're gonna do in the election? I said, boy, I said, I feel I'm gonna be a real good one. And he kinda looked at me and we all knew who I'm talking about. He told me, the reason why he won the, won the primary is because of Rockfish, Wayside, Puppen Creek, what he mentioned, the general election. And I find that so hard to believe, but it's true. Because I can look, go look who did that. The same folks I'm fighting for went ahead and voted for him. Evidently, the people in the county, taxpayers, everybody, citizens are gonna get what ever they ask for come general election, if they don't vote for me. So I really wanna thank y'all for coming. I wanna thank y'all for your support. I wanna open the floor up. Does anybody have any questions? Me, Hal Nun, or any of the speakers, Dan, anyway. Anybody wanna say anything general?
I have one for Dan.
Go.
Are you gonna be at every event in all of Hope County until you get elected? And notice I said get elected? And a positive? And then not show up until the next time you need a vote? I mean, I mean, seriously, because that is what has historically happened in the past. Oh, I'm for Hope County. I'm for Hope County. We give you the votes and then we don't see you anymore. And that's even for our hometown boy. You couldn't throw water out without him being Clark. And who's seen him since?
I haven't. I didn't see him during the primaries. As a matter of fact, he was the only candidate in the primary at any level of government, from congressional down to the judges, city council, county commissioners, that I've never, still to this day, haven't had, need my opponent. Even at the Hope County NAACP Candidate Forum, his opponent was Dr. Aziz. I didn't see him there.
Well, I went.
Oh, yeah, you went. I was there, even though I didn't have a primary, his opponent, Dr. Aziz, was there. He wasn't. And actually, back yard, he sent a spoke.
Wow.
And no, the legislature wasn't in session, so I don't know if he... But to answer your question, actually, Brownie and I were talking about this last Saturday. Yes, I will still be accessible and visible. Will I be at every event? No, for obvious reasons.
Well, if that's impossible, but...
But I don't, I, excuse me, I firmly believe that to represent a community, folks have to know who you are. And most importantly, I need to know your perspective on the issues that are impacting you. Those issues change every day, not every two years during the, during an election cycle. So yes, it is certainly my goal to continue to be out and about. If I'm able to do it now, then there is no reason why I can't do it once elected. State legislature only meets for two, three, four, sometimes five months, depending what's going on, out of the year. And that's for four days a week. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they're back home. And then the rest of the time, they're back in their house going about their day jobs. So there is no excuse why, given the legislature's not in session, that I can't be out and about.
I actually was just giving him a hard time. I'm proud to say that he has already got a booth at the North Carolina Fall Festival in September and will be on Main Street to meet the citizens of Rafer at the largest event in Hope County. And he approached us. So right off the bat, he had my vote.
Do we have any other questions?
Yeah. You're not gonna try to get slingshot in, are you? Because if you do that, it's not gonna work. And that's why one person got elected, is he told everybody to vote for him and not for Mr. Austin. If he'd not told people to vote for himself, James Leach would've went home. Let's face it. Let's be truthful.
And I wanna say something about this. The fact is that I hear what you're saying. And I'm telling you, don't necessarily vote for me. You vote for the person that you feel is gonna do the job for you.
Oh, I'm gonna vote for you?
No, no, that's okay.
I don't like to go on the record. I'm not...
I'm just gonna be honest. I didn't understand it. I'm just being honest.
You had one candidate that really didn't need to ask the support of anybody. He was gonna get the support from his opposing person because they were already like this. He was gonna get the votes for Kristi Noak's people because they were like this. All he had to do was come out and say, I'm running and I want you to vote for James Austin. Joe Austin. Everybody who not only voted for him, I tell them that they're the ones to thank for James Leach still being in. It cannot be won that way. You have to use both of your votes if you want to get rid of one. If not, both of them are going back in.
Let me say this to you. If you have a county commissioner that's been here for 21 years or 23, you have one that's been there for 16, you've got so many problems in this county. Why do you wanna reelect them if they haven't been able to correct it in 23 years and 16 years?
It does not matter. You've got to use those votes to get rid of one of them. You cannot use one vote and expect to win. Please trust me on that. And she's gonna kill me when I get home where you can speak it up.
The civic league in WMFA Regular Station is the voice behind this stuff. Civic League is not actually anything. And somebody needs to drag them out to where they need to come to. And it may be the beginning there. Fact of the matter is, the county, for whatever reason, elects to vote for fish in a vote.
Because they bust them in.
It's gotta be one.
Right. There's a little them there.
No, they bust their voters in.
Yes, they go out and they pick them up and they drag them...
Twenty to thirty at a time.
Call hats.
That's right.
And I'll be glad for, and I wore two on the...
Day of election, one-stop vote?
One-stop. And the day of election, but I cannot do more than three hours.
I agree with Judy, one vote will kill you. It'll bite you.
It will.
I've seen, I've seen too much of that over my years. One vote will bite you, folks. You said single shot. You didn't, I thought you said slingshot. You said single shot. Now I got it.
We're getting ready to adjourn and we really appreciate you coming out. And we would like to invite you to join the Brownie Brown campaign. In order to do that, you need to see Larry or myself. We can write your names and your numbers down. And then you will be our contact person, but we would invite you to join us and help us and just give us your name.
I think you've got a paper out front with your name and your email address. We need that. We need it very bad. Thank you, Michael, for coming.
Yes, sir.
I like, I can recognize you with that hat on.
You're sitting here with Donald Trump.
Donald Trump will break. We wanna thank all of you for coming. I know we're a small number, but I think we've made some noise tonight. And we've all got concerns over Hope County. I wanna thank Hal Nun and Cliff for all your homework that you've done. And I know that those current commissioners just hate to see y'all walk in the room. Well, we come, when we come, we come with audio recorders and video cameras because we're gonna catch them lying. Well, you've already caught them lying, what I heard. Everybody knows that. But you know, just keep in mind, tell everybody about Brownie. Get you a few cards, pass them to your friends. And we're gonna meet back again, the 23rd, we'll have a community meeting, but starting in July, we're gonna meet every fourth Tuesday night, Brownie for County Commissioner. Every Tuesday night, we're gonna be here. And don't forget your signs. Know when we can put them up in the city of Rafer.
We're gonna have signs for Trump, Hudson, Dan.
So we can all make a difference. Every Tuesday night, starting the 26th of July.
26th of July and then the...
Straight through to the election.
23rd of August, 4th of September.
Every Tuesday night, Brownie for County Commissioner, right here.
Fourth Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday night. And then what we're gonna do the weekend before the election, I suggest, and I don't know how Brownie feels about this, but I don't think we need to put out no signs at the polls until about 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning. Yeah, they'll take them down. They're gonna take them down. And what we can do, maybe, maybe we'll look up and catch somebody taking someone. We're gonna put John somewhere. We're gonna have a camp. On election night, you're gonna be here doing the vote. So we got a lot to look forward to. Let us close with prayer. Our gracious heaven and the Father, we thank you for this night. And Father, we just thank you that you let us gather. Father, we ask that you bless us in a special way. Father, we just thank you that Brownie will come into this election in the frame of mind that he wants to serve the people of Hope County. He wants to be and do the right thing that would make people happy. Father, we thank you for our commitment. Thank you for how you blessed us over the years. Continue to bless us, Lord, lead us, teach us, and guide us. All these things we ask you to remain. Continue to bless us, Lord, lead us, teach us, and guide us. All these things we ask you to remember.